Join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, a couple of things I want to say before we begin here. First of all, it is St. Patrick's Day, and the pubs are closed in Ireland, so you can imagine that things are very, very different. As I look out here, we have no seating, every second seat or more, to keep people distance from each other. And one of our members of the board actually is joining us via phone, Supervisor Wilson, who's in self-isolation. So, with that in mind, we'll start the meeting with a roll call for attendance.
Supervisor Madron?
Here.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Fennel?
Here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Here.
So, we have a full board here at the meeting today. And, Madam CAO, are there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, there are some modifications to the agenda this morning. Items C1 and C5 are being pulled and will be brought back at a later date. As an early announcement, item K2 is being continued to April 7th. This is the Emerald Triangle public hearing.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I was writing another stuff down.
Yes, so, items C1 and C5 are being pulled and will be brought back at a later date.
Okay.
And as an early announcement, item K2 is being continued to April 7th. This is the Emerald Triangle public hearing.
Okay, April 7th, thank you. With that, we will go to our consent agenda, as modified. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Second.
As modified.
Get Mike to second.
We already have a second, Supervisor Wilson. Thank you, though, for paying attention. With that, is there any comment on the consent agenda?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Tori Starr. I'm the new CEO for Open Door Clinic Network. For those of you that I haven't had the pleasure of meeting before, it's nice to have a chance to meet you. And just wanted to be able to get a chance to say I appreciate your support in being nominated for the Partnership Health Plan Board of Trustees, and I look forward to representing Humboldt County and our citizens, I think, on that vital organization and being able to represent what we need from a rural county. So, I am looking forward to that, and I appreciate your support from that standpoint. I want to project a little bit of normalcy in a very un-normal time, and just to share with everybody that now's the time to come together in a time when we're actually being forced apart. So, leadership has a big part in that, and so I appreciate all your leadership, and we will continue to do the same for Open Door, to keep our community together during this time. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your efforts. Supervisor Bone?
Hi again. On another note, are you ready?
We're always ready.
Okay. So, I know, is everybody working in tandem and everything else? From what I understand, you guys have a great, you're talking on a daily basis with all our health care providers, Mad River and St. Joe's. I just, you're in front of the mic, and I want people to know that you guys are on top of this, so.
I can speak very clearly to the fact that we, as a community, especially within the healthcare network, work very closely together and are constantly in contact with each other. We just had a call yesterday, and then our team is meeting on a daily basis, just to make sure that the communication gets out in a rapidly changing environment, that we stay clear with our communication, so people don't get worried needlessly.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Ken Swatsky is glad to know that the Open Door family continues. Herman Spitzer is one of those people on my shoulder from time to time. You know, I have all these people on my shoulder, a lot of weight on the shoulder there. Anyway, that partnership is going to be what we have to have. We are 100% dependent upon them, and it's interesting how it happened where all of the healthcare things, basically through the county, a majority have been brought together under one guidance, and just right in the time of need here. And new facilities are open, and we're kind of ready to have boots on the ground and do the best we can here, so that's wonderful. I did want to make mention, Planning and Building Department has, I'm pretending like things are normal. I'm pretending like things are normal, and I'm going to address points as if it was normal, okay? That's all we can do these days. As I did want to make mention, that there's administrative civil penalties being assessed on various properties by John Ford's department here and the people he worked with to get rid of the problem grows we have out there, and I wanted that to be brought forward. Kudos to what they're doing there as far as enforcement, kudos to what you're doing as far as what may be a moot issue in the near future. These enforcements will deal with these specific issues. People are going to be given the choice, do you want to be stoned or you want to eat? Later on, we get a chance to talk about this a little bit, and we'll deal with some of those other things, but I did want to give kudos when they're well-deserved. Not that there aren't other things on there that are deserved, but the efforts made forward, and as we had presentation at last meeting by John Ford Department, there are in the sky and things that are going there. It's been a great effort, and I'm glad to see the way John has worked with all of us. He's one of the tools we need in our tool belt now to move through this process regarding planning and building, and we will need lots of special permits for special things that will enable us to move forward in a safe manner, expediated permission, things of that nature, such as to put in the windmills in an area where 16 acres might have prime egg soil ready to go for a farm. I'm up to speak.
Thank you. Any further comment? And, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sarah Carlotta. I'm going to skip to D, where it says pulled from consent, as one of the people on the land, the California State Republic. I claim this right. Number 19, energy, the supplemental budget for $400,000. It says final expenses, and it says for current planning. It's associated with Teragen. The $400,000 is an estimate of final expenses. It's either one or the other. All costs have been borne by the applicant. However, if the supplemental budget request for consultant services is denied, the applicant is responsible for payment of those professional service agreement fees. Without constitutional authority, the board supervisors puts the proverbial cart before the horse by spending other people's money on a wind project, not only without the consent of the people, but not even when energy ordinance in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment on the consent agenda? So, we're bringing it back to the board, and we do have a few proclamations. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the representatives from the Uroch Tribe, if you want to come up, please. We'll read this resolution into the record and then present it to you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt, 2020 Census, California First Count, Uroch Tribe. Whereas an 18-year-old Uroch tribal member will be the first person counted for the 2020 census in the state of California, and whereas she will be completing the census questionnaire for her household, as should you, hashtag Uroch count, hashtag be counted, and whereas the Uroch Tribe hosted a celebration of this important event, or had planned to, at the Witchpeck Tribal Office on Saturday, March 14th, at 10:00 a.m., and whereas counting everyone in the state is important, as this is how funding dispersment for important assistance is distributed, and whereas rural areas are harder to count, and it is critical to count everyone, so this effort to count native populations is especially important, and whereas the Uroch Tribe and other tribes are committed to having everyone counted, now therefore be it resolved that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby honors all Native American people and commends the Uroch Tribe and all other tribes for their efforts to get everyone counted. Thank you.
And I want to thank you, everyone, for that. As you know, you know, Native Americans have been counted endless times, but it was always to see just how many were left. And now, it's, you know, we're being counted to say, we're still here. So, and just to make a statement about the 18-year-old, you know, she voted in her first primary. She was very nervous about doing it. The 18- to 27-year-old is a hard population to get counted because they're not familiar with the process, and she was very shy, but she was excited. And when she got it done, she said, submitted. So, it was, it was not everyone that we had hoped for, but it was a very private event for just her, you know, but it was exciting. Thank you.
We also have a couple of other proclamations, in honor of social workers, if anybody's here for that, and then also St. Joe's 100th anniversary. Just noted that they are part of the consent agenda. And anything more from the board? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I think, when you look around, there aren't too many businesses that last 100 years, and especially that one that has probably touched every single person in the county, and I want to recognize St. Joe's. They have some celebrations planned, but obviously, things are changing on a rapid basis here. But I do want to recognize them from the board. The Sisters, they arrived in this rugged lumber town of Eureka 100 years ago to open a school, and it's almost so fitting. Sisters, after coming to open a school, were called upon instead to care for the ill and infirm during the deadly flu pandemic of 1920. The Sisters accepted the transfer of the property and then of a defunct local hospital, and began to renovate, rebuild, and receive medical training. So, it's kind of eerie, but kind of thankful that they, so out of all of this, as we move through this, and we get through this, and we all work together, some good will come out of it, some training will, there's going to be some hardships, but at the end, hopefully, something as exciting as St. Joe's Hospital 100 years ago comes out of it. So, look at the light at the end of the tunnel, it's not always an oncoming train.
And as I mentioned, there also is a proclamation in support of our social workers, and also in today's world. Connie?
Hi, Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I'd just like to say, you know, this is Social Worker Appreciation Month, and with all the things going on in the county and in the world today, we need them more than ever. So, appreciate them, and we'll be appreciating them more, hopefully, we have everyone at work today. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. I won't read the whole thing, I'll just say, the resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims March 2020 as Social Worker Appreciation Month, well, the month to do it, to honor social workers and all that they do to enhance the well-being of individuals, families, and the communities within Humboldt County, and encourages supportive programs which benefit the health and welfare of all of our citizens, which is obviously on all of our minds right now. So, thank you for that. And before we take the vote, I do want to echo one of the speakers here regarding the item on enforcement. Anybody who's interested in why that program is necessary should really look at our package today and see the level of damage done to our environment by some of these, and why this program is necessary. So, with that, we'll go to a vote on the consent agenda. Ryan?
Roll call vote for the consent calendar. First District Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, Ryan. So, this is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. If there are only one or two, I am going to go to our time certain, because that deals with the issue before all of us, but if it's just one or two, can you put your hands, okay? Welcome. Comment on items not on the agenda.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Paul Hagan. I'm an attorney, I'm based in Arcata. I came to look at some of the cannabis-related items on the agenda today. I didn't think I'd speak in coming here, but I've appeared before in the past, and I want to say to you that I believe very much in the American form of government, and I believe very much in local government. And today's San Francisco Chronicle says that the entire Bay Area has been shut down. Seven million people are ordered to stay indoors in the Bay Area today, so I want to give my support to you, the Board of Supervisors, and all the people in local government here. We have a special place, and times are difficult, and we do things our way here, and I want to give you a lot of support. I know difficult decisions are coming your way, and all of us are going to have to sacrifice. And myself, I really don't care for people, when people complain a lot about government and do very little to help, now's the time to pull together, so what I want to say is that's for all of us, and I really want to commend the board and all of the staff of Humboldt County, where I have worked for many years, at the good things that we do up here, and encourage everybody to pull together on this virus thing. And again, I really say from the bottom of my heart, thank you to everybody who works for the County of Humboldt and all the governmental units in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul, on behalf of everybody who works for the county.
Ken Swatsky, I've been a little disingenuous. I'm going to change my business card, so you can understand what my life's been like and will continue to be like. It would say autistic savant psychic. That's a little scary. It's kind of like my grandson was extremely upset, and I think I told you this a few years ago, and I finally got him to tell me why his mother died. I had to explain to him, you will see things. That's why I'm here. So, I want to let you know, those of us in the private sector are going to start doing what I do. I have my tenants, four of them got laid off, probably permanently, from the casino, and I'm going to be working, I call it Maggie's Farm. I'm not working on Maggie's Farm now, but I, it's Maggie, I figured that would be appropriate. Out in Blue Lake, it's called the Pumpkin Patch. I told my people, I'm going to try and form a commune. If things go the way they look like they may, we will have jobs where you can work off your rent from me by working and creating food. This is one of the few things that are going to have come out at all good about what you've done with your quote-unquote cannabis issue. You have a lot of growth sites now that could be converted, just like my two-acre vineyard, perfectly set up in Trinity County, can be converted over for the production of what we may need to have. The bad thing about being a savant psychic is you don't know the timing. You know something's going to happen, but you don't know when. Is it this round? Is it a mutation of this virus or the next virus? So, that's one of the flaws that I have personally, as far as that goes. Know things will happen, just don't know when. For those of us who are prepared, I have two windmills down at Kern and Construction. I have money available to go ahead and get permitted and put those in, and money with Kern and Construction currently that would be able to be used to take those 16 acres and bring them to their maximum food production, if that's necessary for the people. This is the kind of insight you folks need to have, need to start working on. Who do we need to help you accomplish this? In my opinion, you should be looking to somebody like Cheryl Dillingham, and Bruce Rupp put the best you can put in that chair right there, because we're going to need a skillset that is not getting permits for friends and family to grow pot, and a skillset that's not putting a tax in place to give everybody big wages. We need functional people in that chair who can do the best they can for this county. I've been trying to get this message across to you for quite a while now. Of course, there's a lot of resistance, because she is very good at doing what I just described, doing other things as far as working with department heads, working with employees, working things I just have to call a spade a spade. Highly recommend that you consider making, reaching out to these people, put them on as interims or temporaries. Cheryl Dillingham's down there, and of course, down there in Riedel right now, and of course, they're extremely happy having her claw her back. Ask Bruce, lean on these people. You're going to need the best management in this county that you can put together if the crystal ball is correct. And again, I can't say when it happened, I just say it will happen. And so far, I think I've been 100% correct on my predictions. If you can remember one where I haven't been, please let me know.
Thank you. So, with that, we will go to our first time certain, or only time certain at this point, and that is from the Public Health Department, is a ratification of the Local Health Emergency Declaration, and also a presentation on COVID-19. Welcome, Dr. Frankovich, Michelle.
Good morning. Michelle Stevens, Public Health Director, good morning.
Dr. Terry Frankovich, Health Officer.
Great. So, we're here for the ratification of the resolution, as you mentioned, and to provide an update on COVID and answer any questions. I believe you want to start?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start off. So, as I'm sure we're all becoming aware, this pandemic is unlike anything that's happened in our lifetimes. It just is in terms of its scope and impact. Communication is a central and critical piece of any emergency response, and I have to point out that in this particular case, it's been very challenging. The reason is, as I'm sure everyone is aware, guidance is changing very fast. Implementation of social distancing policies has been very rapid in certain areas, and now across the state. And so, I think it is not uncommon that something I draft for release in the morning is obsolete by the afternoon. And in that context, what we are really trying to do is focus on the vehicles to get information out, that we're able to connect people with ongoing updated sources, so I'll speak about that in a minute. So, just in terms of an overview, globally, we are now at over 188,000 cases of COVID with about 7,500 deaths. In the US, that's 4740 in terms of number of cases and 85 deaths. California, the last number I have is 454. I think that's from last evening, cases with six deaths. And in Humboldt, we remain at our single identified case, that's now close to a month ago, with no subsequent contact cases after that. There is a map of community transmission that is up on the California Department of Public Health website, and that is updated. And as of today, the counties that are still closest to us with community transmission solo are Yolo County and, the second one, I'm forgetting. I'll grab it for you a second, but Yolo County is really the closest in terms of community But that is updated daily. So, again, right now, most of us are tuned to the social distancing measures that have been implemented. As you know, when this began, the focus was almost exclusively on containment, identifying individuals who are at high risk, isolating, quarantining, and trying to slow transmission in that way. Social distancing measures now are part of the larger community mitigation plan. The efforts here really go to the point of trying to dampen the peak of a curve for cases. So, whereas with some pandemics, and what we saw in China, was the onset of cases going up like this and steeply before it came down, what we are now seeing or attempting to do is to basically dampen that peak and make a slow rise of cases, holding for a longer period. The trade-off is we will probably deal with COVID longer if we try and dampen it, as we are, but it will never be such a huge impact on our healthcare system if we can manage that softer curve for pandemic. And that's really the goal of all of this, is to soften that curve, because we want hospital and ICU bed capacity when we need it. So, the measures that you've been seeing coming out include, with directives from the governor, you know, bar closures, restaurant closures, not closures, but shifting to a delivery or takeout system of providing food, pretty dramatic home isolation measures in terms of senior citizens and those with chronic conditions. One thing I want to point out is we've had, there's been discussion about this in terms of particularly our healthcare workforce and essential services, and I believe there may be some modifications to the language coming out, but the general idea is we want to take the most vulnerable people in our population and cocoon them, if we can, to prevent onset of illness. Additional measures that have been taken are closing the long-term care facility settings to visitors other than those for an end-of-life, really, again, just in an attempt to decrease the number of people coming into a facility and introducing an infection, similar to what happens sometimes during peak flu seasons. And also, all of these sort of entities are recommended to take precautions in their setting in terms of congregating individuals, that type of thing. So, frankly, no one is business as usual right now, and we completely understand that. All of these decisions have sweeping implications for families, for economies, all of that. In terms of our communication, we've really had a couple of focuses. One is, we have our JIC set up, which is really has some content matter experts, people who can speak to business, to faith-based communities, to other individuals reaching out, either as individual citizens or as representatives of an organization, to provide general information and guidance on where to find additional information. We're fielding about 80 of those calls per day recently. We also have calls that are automatically triaged to our nursing staff, so that they can talk to both providers who have questions and needs, as well as talking to the public with questions and concerns. And combined, we're getting about 150 to 160 calls a day that we're handling through public health right now. In addition to that, we are trying to, through media, link people, at least, to the documents that they need and guidances, because again, as I pointed out, since the guidances are coming up fast and getting updated frequently, if we post a single guidance, it may be obsolete pretty quickly, so we want people to have the links to the information where they will constantly get the most updated information, and that's been our approach. One of the largest focuses of our communication has been with the healthcare entities. They are the critical piece of this response, ultimately. And so, meeting with them, both ongoing in terms of who are we testing, what are our criteria, how are we managing patients with COVID, that type of thing, has been ongoing discussions with our partners in those areas, and now, of course, we're additionally working even more intensively on surge capacity. What happens either days, weeks from now, when we do have an increasing number of cases, and how are we situated to respond to that? And those are critically important conversations we're having ongoing with planning. I think I can speak about various issues, testing, those kinds of things, or I don't know if you'd prefer to ask questions on your areas of particular interest.
Supervisor Bass?
Didn't mean to, I didn't mean to be that excited about. Now, when you mentioned testing, though, I was, I thought it was interesting this morning, reading the number of tests that we've had done, I think it was 29, and all came out negative, and I'm curious which people, how are these people actually getting tested? Are these ones that are really sick in the, you know, doctor's offices? Because people have been asking, how can I get tested? And I know that it's, we don't have a lot of opportunities.
Right. Well, and you know, it's a difficult situation, because, you know, the language coming out of Washington has consistently been, if you want to be tested, you just go ahead and get tested, it's no problem. The reality we're all facing on the ground is quite different, obviously. So, what we're seeing is we have increasing capacity over time. The public health labs are ramping up their capacity. The private labs coming into the picture are a huge asset to increase testing capacity. So, those are both important factors. There are tests in development to actually be able to do onsite at a hospital, so you don't even need to have specimens sent off-site, similar to what you do when you have flu, right? So, all of those things are improving our capacity, but all of these entities have to build the structure to do it, and they need the components to do the testing. So, we are in our public health lab, our intent is not, we'll never be able to do the volume of testing, you can do it at a commercial lab. So, whereas, I think the governor mentioned the other day that Quest was expected to be able to do 5,500 samples a day, for us, that number will logistically be about 60. Because we can't test everyone, and because we can fit a critical need of testing people who need a quicker turnaround time in their testing, it's very important that we use that public health lab to make sure we have capacity to test someone who becomes ill in a nursing home, someone, a healthcare worker, someone in the hospital. Where knowing that diagnosis in 24 hours instead of 72 hours is critically important in terms of how that's managed. So, while we have opened up to providers, the ability to request testing on people who didn't traditionally fit the bill, for instance, someone without a known exposure, we are still maintaining the ability to keep some reserve, so that we have that responsiveness when we need it. We have, generally speaking, a pretty good supply chain, but what we're seeing now nationally is that some things, like the viral media that you collect the specimens in, is getting to be in short supply.
Did you say the viral media? It sounds like a bad social media thing.
Yeah, no, so, it actually just, you know, so, all of those components of being able to gather the specimen and test the specimen are pieces in the puzzle that we need to have to be able to operate. And so, what I'm saying to people right now is, we have the ability to test onsite, the commercial labs have the ability, but the testing, the amount of testing that will be done at any given time depends on how that supply chain is going.
And my other question would be, if someone is negative the first time they're tested, do they have to be tested again? do they have to be tested again?
They certainly could. Because again, and one thing we were trying to encourage, a lot of people with, for instance, mild cold symptoms would be like, I just want to know it's not COVID. Well, you know, the problem is you might know today that it's not, and that's reassuring, but you know, that doesn't tell you your status a week from now or two weeks from now or whatever. And so it's really important to think about, in the best of all worlds, I would love to just have the ability to test everybody who would love to be tested. That has great benefit in terms of public health for surveillance, but it's just we have to use the resources we have wisely at this time.
I just want to clarify, too, that we are not collecting specimens in public health. Our lab is testing the specimens that are collected via other places like clinics and hospitals and whatnot.
The decision is at the primary care level or hospital level about evaluating the patient and their symptoms.
We're not a primary care clinic, that's why.
However, what we do do is when we get a call from a provider who would like testing, is that call actually goes through our communicable disease nurse to Dr. Josh Ennis, who's assisting us in response, and he evaluates each of those requests in a real-time manner, and we're able to tell them, go ahead, collect it, or it probably isn't a priority and could go to the commercial lab.
I know we all have questions for you. I just want to ask you something very quickly here with regard to the images we see in other countries of people lining up and getting testing, and that gives us a much bigger, clearer understanding of just how much it has spread or it is spreading. And I know how it's not doing it. Is there any point in time where you would see something like our health workers doing something like we do with the flu vaccine, for instance, where people can go and get the tests?
Well, again, I think you probably saw with the governor's announcement the other day that they're working on some pilot projects to be able to do because a lot of people want to do this, but the staffing and capability and test availability have been sort of issues in structuring that. So I think this idea of people being able to triage their symptoms sort of online with this geospatial capability to send them to a mobile test site that's closest to them is outstanding. I think that's an excellent idea, and they're piloting, I think, in San Mateo and Santa Clara counties. There are places where they are trying to implement sort of mass, you know, where 500 cars lineups types of screenings. I think those are, in some areas, have turned out to be problematic. But I think down the road, will we attempt, are we attempting to do this? Are we attempting to structurally try and make that happen? Yes, I would like to see that happen, but we just logistically have to have all the pieces in place to do it.
Supervisor Bone?
I don't know if I want somebody that's sick actually going out and driving to get tested. I think since there's no, since, unless you have back-lying health issues, if you're tested positive, you're going to send them home and tell them to hunker down.
That's absolutely true.
So if you think you're sick, hunker down.
Right, and thanks for that. Because, you know, the testing issue is, you know, partly it's a reassurance thing for people, but it is a useful tool from a public health standpoint. It identifies circulation in your community. It actually can, if, early on, before you have a lot of cases, you can do some, you know, more stringent isolation and things like that. But the real message, I think, here today is that we're seeing spread. We have not seen it yet in our community. We haven't documented that, but it will arrive on our doorstep. And we've watched communities who have had spread, as they've ratcheted up their responses appropriate to the spread within their community. And so, but right now, what we want for people to do is if they have mild cold-type symptoms, you stay home.
Well, and you're also more susceptible to the virus, to the virus, if you are compromised health-wise anyway, right?
Mm-hmm. Certainly individuals with chronic health conditions, older individuals are more vulnerable to the infection, immunocompromised individuals are more vulnerable. But in terms of containment and mitigation, which is where we're going with this, basically what we want to do is reduce the number of sick people walking around the community. We're not ever going to know who all has what at any point in this, but what we know is, we're all safer if ill people are at home. And so we want people to stay home. The people who actually have symptoms that need healthcare, where they feel they actually need a physician evaluation, are the people who should be reaching out to their provider and being evaluated. And then the provider works to determine whether they should be evaluated for COVID. If you're somebody who's in a higher-risk category, that point for you to contact your provider should be earlier. If you're someone who has exposure to a known case or you've traveled to a high-risk area, then your bar for calling your provider when you have symptoms is a bit lower. But for the general public, if this, if your illness is not something you would normally go to the doctor for, stay home. That's the recommendation.
Okay. And the other thing, we've got Humboldt Health Alert, and what I'd like to see, besides the daily updates, to make sure we have daily updates, I would like to see a frequently asked questions part on that because I know we have a hotline to call. And I talked to a couple of people that are on the hotline, and they're reassuring people that Asian food doesn't cause this and all the other, they're getting some pretty crazy questions and stuff like that. But if we had the frequently asked questions, and since we're taking it so hard on the chin on this and everything else, I did three PSAs yesterday for one of the, for one of the radio groups, and they're playing now, I guess. I'm wondering if we should do more to push the Humboldt Health Alert. The sheriff could put his message on, everybody that has a message could get on there and have that, instead of it being almost a part of our, almost have it a standalone right now, with all the FAQs on there, everything that people are looking for, because for some people, that's all they have to look at. All the updated information come from the CDC. Right now, people are hungry for information. I've had 20 texts this morning, are we on quarantine? What do I do?
Right.
I mean, it's going through the roof. I mean, and I have to thank you because I think our last phone call was Sunday night at 8:30 or whatever, because I had a guy that owned a gym, and he says, what do I do? But I mean, there are so many questions being asked out there, and they want to ask the professionals. There's so much, so much out there that is either false or misleading or just confusing. And if we can be the leaders on the information and push the Humboldt Health Alert, it's the most important thing we got going right now because this is the most important thing happening right now. On the Humboldt Health Alert, we could, we could, we could branch off what we're doing with our, you know, yesterday I said, is there a way we could think out of the box for the library? And then I noticed that the library is eBooks, audiobooks, you can still do those online. And he is looking at some sort of way to, you know, so there's no interaction to get books because people, if they're going to be domiciled, some people, that's the only thing. So I appreciate him thinking outside the box. That's what I was hoping for. But if we could put these, all these answers for the county on there so people have something to go to and have these questions answered, because I talked to Sacramento last night, and there's a couple other counties that are going to probably be within the next two days going into this same situation, just to the north of us, I mean, to the south of us, excuse me. Their exact quote was, Humboldt always has done real well on their own and has always rallied to do the right thing. So with that in mind, we can't sit up here and tell people what to do. We have to convince people to do the right thing. And what it is, is something as what may seem silly is putting every two seats, you'll see, we're self-separating people, but we should be doing that automatically. And I don't think, because we can, we can, people that have gone forward on this have stemmed the flow. We're a week ahead of it. I wish we were two weeks ahead of it, but we're ahead of the game, and I think we need to put this on steroids. And I think our CIO is going to talk about they're pushing back, there's some taxes, there's relief, there's a federal bill coming through right now on relief. The government's going to spend a lot of money trying to make you whole. I ask people not to take advantage of that, to do just what you would have needed so everybody can get a piece of that pie, so at the end of this, we all come out of it somewhat whole. Because otherwise, this could cripple our society as we know it, and that's the last thing. And my last little rant is, if you have somebody older in your neighborhood that lives by themselves, go knock on their door, ask them if they need anything.
Exactly.
And take care of them. It's kind of a neat way to meet your neighbors, too, so. But anyway.
Phone-in is helpful, too.
But I would, I would love to see us, right now, after the election, they have a whole bunch of open airtime. So I imagine there's some deals out there, and maybe we could get, we could maybe even get them through PSAs, but we should be telling everybody about Humboldt Health Alert and make, and putting that thing on steroids.
A few, a few things to, in terms of what you just talked about, yes. There are FAQs up that are updated routinely, and as Dr. Frankovich has mentioned, the challenge is that they constantly, everything we put out needs to be updated, and that, that's why we have staff in the Joint Information Center that are working on that perpetually more than eight hours a day, updating that. So there is, there is information there. Okay. The other thing is, you know, it's not just the public health department, that's the public health system. It's everybody, right? It's philanthropy, it's schools, it's law enforcement, it's everybody. And so really what we should all be doing right now while we have this time to breathe and we don't have any positive cases confirmed right now is planning. And that's what we're really working hard on, especially around surge capacity for healthcare. That's going to be where the rubber meets the road when we start seeing positive cases. So we're, what we're trying to communicate to everybody and organizations and partners and individual community members is planning. There's a, there's a reasonable level of worry that should exist, but we really need people to be calm and do what they can, do their part in terms of organizational planning for how you're going to continue to function. We still have to try to have some semblance of functionality in our society right now. Some communities are sheltering in place where everybody has to stay home. We're not there yet. So right now, what people can do is get their two weeks' worth of medication and vitamins and whatnot, right? And people are definitely doing that, but we want to, we want to stress that. And if you don't have to go out, don't, you know, get outside, go for a walk, don't go to, you know, restaurants are closed now for dine-in eating, according to the governor's executive order yesterday or last night. So we're going to, it changes every 24 hours about what ends up happening from the state side. And so I just wanted to say that that's really where we need to be focusing is really doing our planning and everybody doing their part around that. The other thing is, we're ratcheting up, like Dr. Frankovich was saying, is that you want to be really strategic from a public health response and how you respond and ratchet up appropriately at the appropriate time. And so right now, public health, we were, we're going to be growing our operation in terms of having a unified or consolidated command system with OES for the response. This is larger than sort of the public health response in terms of sick individuals, testing, surge capacity for healthcare and things like that. We're now looking at things like, how do we serve seniors that are isolating at home and need access to food and things like that? So it's larger than public health, and so we're going to be talking more about what that looks like. But to your point, Supervisor Bone, that's kind of what we need, we need to be doing in terms of getting information to people quickly and updated as much as possible to answer questions, to ease concern, to kind of address the panic that's out there right now.
So I would like to, I really appreciate you bringing that up, Michelle, because that is really our role right now, is to assure people that we are doing the very best and we are planning, and that's why we're not doing, why we're not testing everybody who would like to be tested. There's a reason behind it all. That, I think, is the biggest focus we need to pay attention to. I'd like to know, in terms of healthcare workers, et cetera, you've been in contact with all the hospitals. I know that St. Joe's has a surge tent now. I understand that Southern Humboldt, Gerald Phelps also has a surge tent. Is that the kind of thing that everybody is doing as well?
Well, St. Joe's right now, I mean, I think all of the hospitals have tents and the ability to use that. We're certainly in discussions with hospitals about both their onsite operation inside their walls, as well as how that's expanded to alternative care sites. So, you know, where are we going to care for patients if we have a large number that exceed what we can do inpatient? So looking at, you know, the long-term care facility beds that are available, looking at non-traditional spaces that we can house patients. But the St. Joe's endeavor right now is really meant to be a triage, so what they're trying to do is take a bit of the burden off the emergency department and looking at folks as they're coming in and figuring out who actually needs to be seen, who really doesn't, who may need to be tested, who does not. And so that's really the purpose. So they're not, at this time, doing patient care outside their walls, but they're really using as an extension of their ED to be able to assist.
Now, one of the things that the governor was talking about at a meeting just the day before yesterday, I think, or maybe even yesterday, is his concern regarding the homeless population. And I know that in Southern Humboldt, a local group has put out some handwashing stations in Garberville and Redway, those kind of things. What other efforts are happening now in terms of that and in terms of identifying who might or might not be infected?
Yeah, so I think one of the challenges that we all face in terms of serving the folks that are not housed is the funding associated with that in order to do a response like this. So if people are ill or are being tested and have, or test positive for COVID, they need to have a place to convalesce, right? And so that's where the governor really wants people to focus in terms of the homeless population as well of those, as well as those 65 or older or with chronic conditions. So there's lots of conversation between county jurisdictions and the state around the extra funding that's going to be coming in order to do that. The governor has the executive order that allows him to commandeer hotels and motels, and he's brokering leases currently. And we're not, there is no confirmation right now that the state is going to fund that to local jurisdictions, that, unless that changed as of 4 o'clock yesterday. So, and then there's also the appropriation that went through the legislature, that there's language in there that implies that there is county funding available that will come to counties, but we're really not clear what that's going to look like. So in the meantime, locally, we're planning, we're meeting with folks like St. Joe's, the other providers like Free Meal and Senior Resource Center and folks like that around what are folks able to do within their own organizations to plan, and also, what do we do when we need beds? What do we do when we need to put people places?
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that was one of the questions I wanted to follow up on because I had a conversation with Connie yesterday. And I also talked with one of the city council members in Eureka, who is really concerned that they, they want to be part of whatever's going on, they want to help where they can. I just want to make sure we have a really clear communication with our city partners because if not, that's a problem.
Or will be. Right. So the ratcheting up that we're doing is specifically having some kind of work group or task force around the homeless population and how we address this. That's what I, that's why we're expanding the operation to, with OES as well, to be able to loot more people in and bring more supports in to address that. Because as public health, we certainly are not the sole entity to be planning for that or DHHS for that matter.
And we have been doing weekly governmental calls, so for, you know, those, those types of folks to call, and we do an update conference call and take questions and try and provide information in that venue, too.
So I have Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Madron want to have some questions. I just want to not forget that we have another supervisor with us. Supervisor Wilson, do you have any questions or concerns?
Thanks for not forgetting me.
Okay, great.
I would say that the questions that Supervisor Bass and Bone put forward were all the questions that I had, and I think that Supervisor Bone had some great words with regards to leadership that Humboldt County can take in this unprecedented event, and I really appreciate this presentation.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Bone?
Geez, I like you on the phone.
Should try that more often.
I, I don't think, I, I think the thing that bothered me the most right there is we're waiting to see what the state's going to do. If, and I'm just, I'm just going to take the analogy, if you're drowning, I hope to hell you're not going to wait for the Coast Guard, you're going to start swimming and saving yourself. So what I'm saying is, I think one thing we better do in case we start testing positive, and especially on the most vulnerable that have nowhere to go hunker down, I think we go make arrangements, just like we do with our hotel vouchers and everything else, and we go get some rooms backed up, or the agreement, because nobody has a no vacancy sign out right now because it is March.
Let me clarify, I'm not saying that we're waiting to do any planning until we determine if.
No, I know you're not waiting for planning, but don't wait for the money.
I understand.
I understand. If you want, we'll go find the money if we have to. We have, we have, we have people that will find. Go make arrangements for rooms, so if we have somebody, if we have somebody and there's, there's monies available, but I.
Right.
I think that, I'm just saying, have rooms available, and that's, that's not going to be a problem. And then we back-bill the state, and then we fight with our representatives if it's, if it's, you know, backbreaking. But if we do everything right going into this and are making sure that they have their separations and we're, and we're attending to them a little bit better, we may, we may not even, even have the issue. But I think if somebody tests positive, the first thing we do is we put them in a room that. that can, you know.
And public health, public health has done that before for other communicable diseases, so we have that piece. I think really, and what Michelle is referring to, is sort of that bigger piece when we're talking about numbers. You know, when we really need a bigger response and more than, you know, a few scattered motel rooms, something sizable, and that's what we're really working.
Fully understand, but we get to that point, it's the health and well-being before finances.
Absolutely.
So I mean, and fight for the finances, or tell us to fight for the finances. That's why we were talking last night to Sacramento on this basic thing, to make sure this funding is, kind of like our homeless housing, that we, the governor says there's a bunch of money out there, but we're having a heck of a time getting our hands on it. This is a little bit different situation, so I think we need to know that we're going to, and even if we have, we need 40 rooms, 50 rooms, we're going to get 40 or 50 rooms. We'll make it work somehow, and I think our most vulnerable need to know that if they don't have anywhere to hunker, so.
If anything, this pandemic reminds us of how much we need to fight for public health infrastructure funding in general. We are a small health department. We've got a handful of nurses when you really think about it. And so there's been luckily some funding coming from the legislature for communicable disease infrastructure building for local jurisdictions, but it really is a drop in the bucket. There needs to be coordinated effort across the state and other states around other organizations having planning for this, because people are looking at public health to answer their internal questions for them, and that's not for us to do. We really all have to do our part with our own planning. So yes, fight for funding. Fight for funding to house homeless people who have COVID and others, for surge capacity for hospitals, for ventilators, for all of that.
And really, again, maybe we want to shine in California by being the county that doesn't have any because we acted quickly. And that would be, I think, the vision we want to hold and at the same time prepare. I want to point out, Supervisor Madron wants to talk next, but I want to point out that Dr. Frankovic has been drinking water this whole time. Can you tell us about the advantages of staying hydrated in a time like this?
I am, probably much like many of you, I am talking all day right now, and it's difficult to remember to just pick up that cup, so yep. Staying hydrated, huge health benefits, for sure.
Great. But there's also, that also has a health benefit, right, in terms of if there are any colds or anything going around?
Just being hydrated is huge, and your sense of well-being, of course, so. I'm trying to remember, and my husband packs this every morning, so there you go.
There you go.
One thing, I'm sorry, one thing I did want to mention is the question about, we've been talking about sort of the continuum of what we're doing, and it is important for people to remember that it is a stepwise approach, even social distancing. So, you know, whereas certainly people go, well, you know, San Francisco shut down, shall we shut down? And we just want to say that San Francisco did not shut down when they had their first case. San Francisco implemented that at a point they felt that would be most useful because it obviously has enormous consequences. And we are doing that same thing. We will increase our measures locally as the local picture suggests we should. We'll do that balancing benefit and cost. And I don't mean financial cost necessarily, I mean cost in terms of our functioning within our community. We're not there yet on closing things down, but we are in that mode where we're saying it's preparedness, not panic, and we need people to just be thoughtful in their approach.
That's great. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really appreciate all the work at the Health Department and everybody's doing, all the frontline responders, first responders, just tremendous effort, very supportive of all that. I was just realizing that so many of the words we're dealing with start with an S. I'm not sure what that's all about, but, you know, with tsunamis and with earthquakes, we've developed these little things of, you know, drop cover, hold and things, and this one is stop shelter and save, save lives, right? So surge capacity, social distancing, self-hygiene, self-isolation, stay home, stress reduction. I really appreciate you bringing that up because there's a tendency to start panicking and start freaking out about all of this, and that can increase your chances of getting sick. So the more we can do to have stress reduction and stay home, read a good book, exercise, take a walk, like you said, all these things make a lot of sense. And in light of the directives that have been sent out by the governor and others being over 65 and also having a compromised immune system, I am going to be self-isolating starting after this meeting today. So I may also be a person that is calling in, but I want to set an example that I'm not a central services per se, and I can do my work from home with my computer and my phone. And so to set a good standard, I wanted to inform my colleagues that I will be doing that after this meeting today for the next two weeks and then evaluate where we're at in two weeks. So again, thank you for all that you're doing. I have really not much else to say.
And we'll know where to find you, then.
Yes, you will.
We'll have more room up here to solve this.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, I do want to note that I have been contemplating the concept of canceling next week meeting. We also have the 31st canceled already, so we may be looking at that. Might be, make a lot of sense for everybody to kind of step back, and I don't believe there's anything really outstanding that we would have to get to. I do want to invite the sheriff, if you wouldn't mind, Sheriff Hansel and Ryan Derby are here from the OES, to just give us an update on how things are going with regard to COVID-19.
Good afternoon or good morning, Sheriff Fennell. Appreciate Public Health's direction here. We are establishing a joint command after this declaration of emergency was ratified. So we're meeting with public health right after this and talking about upscaling our EOC and providing some key roles and some planning logistics that really need to happen over the next two weeks. I love the fact that we are preparing, okay, and that we are, that we're not necessarily reactionary, but we're preparing for that worst case. But I think in this time of uncertainty, having the calm and patience to plan is essential for county government to function. It's what we all need to do in this moment. And so there are plenty of county employees that are showing up to work every day, that are doing their jobs, and so I applaud them for doing that, because this is when we really need to step up and do our jobs and show the leadership that's necessary to navigate this emergency. But I do urge this board and other legislative bodies to maintain a sense of calm, to not necessarily look around what other counties are doing, let's focus on the direction that's occurring here and really be mindful because of the consequences that occur by being too cautious in shutting things down too quickly. Because this is, we're here for the long haul, okay? And so we are preparing now for things that are going to occur 30, 45, 60 days out. And so I've already contacted or talked with public health. Our number one concern right now, again, are those seniors that are sheltering in place, okay? So we are, that's going to be our first priority when we move forward and how we can address their needs at this point in time and working with the community to partner with them to ensure that they have everything that they need. You know, absent widespread community transmission, we are going to be focusing on that, and then we will evolve into other things after when and if that does occur. But I want to thank Michelle, Dr. Frankovic, and again, Ryan Derby, our OES manager, for the leadership, and the CIO with operating the JIC. And so we have pushed out information, we're going to continue to push information out to the community, but also, we want to also inform the cities that it's also their responsibility to make those decisions within their municipalities. Things like caring for the homeless and those kind of things. Those are things the city can and do that kind of action immediately and then request funding through us, through CalOES. Edwin's in the room from CalOES in the back, so thank you, sir, for being here and the support that CalOES has given. But that's the kind of procedure that needs to take place. The city municipalities can ask for assistance and go through our office to go to the state. And so that's the kind of things that we all need to work together to have kind of a joint response in this emergency. So I want to invite Ryan up to address if there's anything else that he can add to that, Ryan?
So I don't have much to say. I feel like public health and the sheriff covered most of that, but I think consolidating command under OES is going to allow us the opportunity to explore wraparound services. So right now, like the sheriff said, we're focusing on seniors, we're focusing on healthcare, and we're focusing on our first responder agencies. And by having an operational area at EOC that allows us the opportunity to pull in agency or representatives from other allied agencies, better share information with them and with the public, and really just be that supportive mechanism for public health and their mission. Aside from that, I don't have much else to contribute. We've got a lot of people working downstairs right now, and I'm anxious to get back down there and help them, so.
Well, Ryan, I just want to say, it's really good news that you're firing up the GIC, the Joint Information Center. You've done so well with our other challenges with the PSPS and the storms, and I think that this is a really good central area for the dispensing or dispersing of information. So we're looking forward to a really solid model in that regard. So thank you for your efforts on those as well.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
Ryan? Ryan, sheriff, Michelle, doctor, you guys can all answer this. The only, the one thing I'm thinking about is these counties that are going on complete lockdown, are they going to be first in line for funding? Is there any talk of that? I just, I mean, subliminally or anything else? And I haven't heard anything in neither Sacramento?
No, we've not heard anything either.
Okay, I'm just saying, they're the, I can just hear it now, they're the most impacted. All these other ones are operating, and that's not, I mean, we're operating on shoestrings and, and as sheriff said, we have a lot of employees coming to work, and we really appreciate the ones that are coming, because we have essential services and things like that. But we fully understand the ones that have, you know, comprised, compromised health or feel the age or have someone at home or don't feel well aren't coming, that they're fully, that's fully understood, but I really appreciate all the employees that are doing that. But I just, you haven't heard anything?
No.
Okay.
Supervisor Bone, in regards to funding, what we can do at the county level now that we do have an EOC activation, Department Operations Center activation, and the JIC activation, is really tracking those personnel costs. Any supply and equipment costs, we need to be tracking that. We're going to be standing up a finance section in the EOC that's going to be providing a daily cost associated with the incident. And that way, at any point in time, if you have a question, you know, what is this costing the county, we'll be able to relay that number. In terms of future reimbursement with the health declaration, state declaration and federal declaration, that lays a framework for future reimbursement. It's not a guarantee, but I think by ratifying the declaration today, we're putting ourselves in line for potential funding. And at some point down the future, we might need to request CDAA funding through the state, but we're not at that point yet.
Well, I think this is a good time for people in the public and everything to realize how fluid our, from our CIO's office is directing and down to the sheriffs, the OES, and all the way to public health and everything else. And as Supervisor Madron said, the frontline staffs are doing all the work.
It's huge.
But the last thing I want any of them to think about is, what I was trying to get to earlier is, are we going to have enough funding? We'll find the funding. Let's just take care of the situation and get through this, and hopefully we're all talking in 60 to 90 days going, boy, we escaped a bullet there. That's what we want, that's what we're trying to direct. So if, as silly as it may seem, if you think it's a problem, ask us about it and we'll make it work.
Thank you.
If I can piggyback on one more thing, you know, while we're tracking financial costs for the counties, I want to encourage businesses to also track revenue lost throughout this incident, as we're starting to see some small businesses that are seeing substantially lower numbers this time of year than they did last year. And there is potential for SBA funding and small business loans after the fact, but it's important to start tracking that loss of revenue now, so when the application period starts, we can get those submitted to the state and hopefully help some of these people pick back up.
So Ryan, would it be helpful also, I know you, you stay in contact with all of our operational area partners, can we include the chambers in that list of, at least with that information?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
So one thing that we're looking at for EOC staffing, we want to have a volunteer coordinator that's working with distribution of supplies, but also want to have someone working on economic development, small businesses, so they can start fielding those income loss tracking or income loss reports, and then that's someone that can then push that up to the state. And we'll include the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development, SBA will get, will get them looped in.
Fantastic. Supervisor Madron?
Well, I was going to make the motion, but I guess we'll have public comment first and follow that process.
We have a little bit more to go. Any other questions for the sheriff or Ryan? Thank you very much and really appreciate knowing that you guys are all involved in this. It's heartwarming, thank you. Director Beck?
I just wanted to add one thing when we're talking about seniors. Based on the last census data, 17% of our population is over 65. That's about 24,000 elderly folks, so really important that we're working on that piece now. And that's not an effort that will just be done by public health, but that will take our whole community to do. So thanks for including that.
Thank you, Connie. Yeah, I actually had a conversation with Connie Stewart about that last night because it occurred to me, what is the percentage? And when you think about it, it's almost a fifth. So that's extremely important. So I'll open it up to public comment now. Welcome.
Thank you. Linda Cessara Carlotta, and this may take longer than the three minutes, but it's well worth listening to. It's from a judge in Alaska. Knowledge is power and the ultimate power resides in every individual in America. Certain reports are consistent with infectious disease symptoms and results, but then turn around and the next 10 reports make no sense at all of this outbreak is caused by biological vector. I do mean no correlation, none, zero, zip, nada. What those aberrant findings indicate is a non-biological source of malady, electromagnetic radiation sickness coupled with poor air quality in China and reduced atmospheric oxygen levels. Those been following along with the recent posts have become familiar with research going back more than a century compiled and published by Arthur Furchenberg in his book, The Invisible Rainbow. Put simply, the raw transmissions of our power plants, electrical grid, radio transmitters, and now microwave towers have known health problems associated with them. Most particularly, they interfere with porphyrins, which are enzymes needed to build hemoglobin. Hemoglobin is the molecule that carries oxygen in our bloodstream, so this whole metabolic system is impacted and our cells and tissues are not able to access and use oxygen efficiently. There are other known effects, too, such as thinning of our blood, reducing its oxygen carrying capacity, at the same time, it reduces our ability to coagulate blood. Outrageously, these effects of unrestricted EM transmissions have been known in some circles for over a century, but have been poo-pooed and obscured in favor of those benefiting financially by not having to modulate electrical outputs to power companies and from treating the anorexia-caused diseases that predictably result from long-term exposure to raw EM fields. The resulting interference with our ability to access and use oxygen, blood thinning effects, serious air pollution in China, and overall reduction in atmospheric oxygen can create a domino effect resulting in symptoms that mirror hemographic fever. Viewed against that background and a view of the new, of the 5G rollout in Wuhan just prior to this, South Korea's success with treating coronavirus with simple oxygen therapy makes total sense. There are still more serious lessons to be learned from the Spanish influenza epidemic that hit in 1918. Bear aspirin was big news in 1918. It was initially prescribed in literally lethal doses during the Spanish flu epidemic. I quote, "In 1918, the Bayer Corporation was pushing aspirin in a dosage thus far exceeding now-known safe levels. Both the Army and Navy mandated these known toxic doses for their service members, and civilians were so encouraged to do the same. Aspirin in such high doses is a hemoglobinic toxin similar to rat poison, in lethal doses, death can occur in a few hours." I'm going to skip and go down to what she says about to be, yeah, oxygen, we're at 18%. That's what we really should be looking at in electromagnetic fields. But she discusses biotin, which is important to take in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. I want to explain why I'm here today. At age 65, just about 66, all my family said, don't come. They didn't want me here, obviously. I wheeze a little bit, you know, I have all the symptoms that would normally say, don't be here. I'm here for a reason, for normalcy. This is an aggressive flu. It needs to be dealt with. It's compounded. It's compounded by the fact that back in the Spanish flu, we had very few, our population was what, 1/10th maybe of what it is? I don't even have a, I just pulled that number out of the air. People were packed together, we had problems. What, what is, what is the problem that we will have here? People like myself may pass. We need to watch, we need to do the best we can, and we need to take care of each other while we're doing it. That's why I'm back here from Mexico. I feel I can do some good, I'm offering my services to work in the private sector to do what our skills are. We all need to do that together. We all need to have a normalcy in our life. You can see I'm calm, I'm not stressed, I run into people, and different people take this differently. Some people get really grumpy, you know? You have people who just, you do, rustle a paper or something, and all of a sudden, they're all over you. But you, you really need to, to, to understand that we need to all work together, we're in a very unique place. I strongly suggest that in a time of need, that not only do you have your meeting next week, but you have a meeting on the 31st. And you come before the people, and whether you're here physically or here to somehow put cardboard people up there for the film, I don't, I don't care, but you need to show the people that our lives all go on together, and this is a psychological thing that you can help all of us with, because when you come here and assure the people that there will be a future, we will go back to normalcy, you're our leaders. And in my opinion, this is something that I, I request and strongly suggest you consider, rather than canceling your meetings, and spend the time to give updates, spend the time to let everybody know what you're doing, spend your time like you did today to let them know what to do to duck and cover. What, what is our concern? When does this really go beyond a bad flu? Well, it, it's called a, it's called a mutation. It's when you see, if you see this mutate and you get wave after wave for two or three years, and then you have a tsunami. If it starts mutating, and it already has, is my understanding, I'm not a doctor, this is all by rumor and what you hear out there, that, you know, that, that things of this nature are what we have to watch, because that hits different segments, different things. Of course, if you ever combine this with a bacterial infection, then we have, have something that's 95% downsizing. I don't know whether Mother Nature has the ability to do that. We all have to be aware, we all have to get along, we all have to be patient with each other in these times, consider it, and like you say, look after the elderly. I assume you have a list of them. We need a phone bank, just calling them once a day, have you fallen and you can't get up? I mean, that's something that people could donate to do, I think if you want to do something, I hope you will organize that and get ahold of the old people on that basis. Then you'll have people mentoring them and taking care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lisi Riz. I'm a resident here in McKinleyville, and I'm just pretty concerned that we're not really taking this as seriously as we should be, and it seems like we're failing to recognize that we are like one of the poorest counties in the country, and that we do have a high percent of people that are overweight, or that are smokers, or that have like underlying health conditions, like we're not a healthy community, and our hospitals already can't handle the, the sick that we have. We have maybe like 12 ICU beds at St. Joe's, and on the topic of ICU beds, like learning from what's going on in Europe right now and how like overwhelmed they are, and that for 20% of all cases in Italy, they required ICU care, and that's including people that were under 65. And then in France, over half of the ICU patients were under 60. So like, it's not just the elderly. And then Italy had to triage and like basically act like it was wartime, and people like me, if I got sick and had to be in ICU, would be, you know, picked over someone that's elderly, because I'd have a higher chance of survival. And so like, thinking of family that is elderly, and that I don't want, I don't want to be picked over them, I want them to survive. It feels like we're not, we're not taking advantage of the fact that we don't have any cases yet, and we're, we're just like acting like things are normal, and like making people still go to work and still be in like crowded offices, and, and it's, it's, it's scary. Like, I'm not scared for myself, I'm scared for people that I care about, and for you guys, like we're all in this together, and it seems like we're not taking it seriously enough, and I'm concerned, very concerned. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for caring. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Madron?
Well, I really appreciated the comments that Supervisor Bone made earlier about the Humboldt Health Alert page. And I was just realizing, you know, when you go to that page, you've got to scroll all the way to the bottom, several pages down, to where you finally find the place that says, "Sign up to receive alerts via email or on your phone." And I'm thinking, let's bring that up to the top of the page and make it a little larger font, because it's hard to find, and the more we can get people to sign up for this directly, the more consistent the information will be throughout the community. I know that I'm trying to do some postings, I've been reluctant to post much, because there's so much information coming out. People are, I believe, hungry for information, as Supervisor Bone said, but also overwhelmed by what's being put out there on Facebook and through all the other social media. So if we could bring that up to the top of the website and embolden it, and us as supervisors and others in the community, encourage people to sign up for these alerts, because getting everybody on the same page will help with planning and everything else, so that would just be one suggestion I would offer. And with that, I would move that we accept or receive the report that has come to us and ratify the resolution as recommended by staff.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So we're going to go to a roll call on this.
So roll call vote. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Was revamping the Humboldt Health Alert, the changes included with that?
It's just a recommendation to staff. I think they got it.
Okay, yes. Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson? Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
That is unanimous, and thank you very much, everybody. Thank you so much to Dr. Frankovich and the Health Department and the Sheriff's Department, the Joint and Information Center, and also all of the Humboldt County employees that were thanked earlier, who are stepping up and showing up for our community. And thank you to all the volunteers who, who stepped up. I know that people care a lot, and we hear a lot of suggestions, so getting that information out, and I think we'll, we'll be able to flow that a little bit easier now with the JIC. So again, thank you very much, really appreciate it. And we'll figure out a way to make sure that the community stays informed in this, whether it's board meetings or press conferences with the JIC. And so that will bring us to our next time-certain item. And this is actually something, is a hearing that we have already pre-announced, we will be continuing, but we still go through that, so I would welcome Planning and Building Director John Ford, and
Thank you, Captain.
I guess I must open the hearing.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. Well, we would ask that you not.
Okay.
We have attempted to notify the public that a hearing will not be held today, and it would be disingenuous to allow others to come and comment. If people want to comment on the continuance, that would be appropriate, but we are, have identified to the applicant, the appellant, and members of the public that this is being continued to the meeting of April 7th, to protect public health and safety, not wanting to attract a large crowd into a small room. And, and so, given the fact that people have been discouraged from coming, it would be highly disingenuous to take public comment and open the public hearing today.
Thank you for that clarification, Director Ford. So what I will do is, if there's anybody here to speak to this item, just remind them that they would only be speaking to the fact that it has been continued.
Well, that it, the, it is, the proposal is to continue. The continuance, because it wasn't shown
Right.
On the face of the agenda, requires a vote of the board, so we'll need a motion and a second to continue with the April 7th of 2020. Depending on what happens, is we heard in the presentation just moments ago, that, you know, things may change next week, but we may have to reevaluate on April 7th, but the current plan is to continue with the 7th. That gives us a couple of weeks to evaluate whether a hearing can be held, under what circumstances, and to explore those options. But that is basically what we're, we're suggesting would be the prudent course right now.
Thank you. With that, I will open it up to public comment, if there is any. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Madron, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair. I would move that we continue this hearing till April 7th.
Second.
7th.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, no further comment, and we'll do a roll call. Vote.
Okay, so roll call vote. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Five oh, and thank you to everybody for your understanding, and again, it is continued to the 7th, barring anything else that might change. Thank you, Director Ford. So this brings us to item H1, which is the, from the County Administrative Office, and it's an update on the consultation services for a bond measure and ballot measure deadlines.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. On March 3rd, your board directed staff to return on March 17th with a budget proposal to fund necessary consultation and polling services for a potential energy bond measure, and to further review the timeframe to meet the ballot deadlines. Contract negotiations with Lou Edwards Group are incomplete at this point in time, and therefore, staff is unable to bring a supplemental. Board may recall Humboldt County has used LEG or Lou Edwards Group for ballot measures Z, S, and O. Once the contract negotiations are complete, staff will return to your board with a contract and supplemental budget request. Estimated cost for LEG through October 2020 is estimated at $156,000. This includes opinion, research studies, project management, and strategic planning. The ballot measure deadlines and requirements are as follows. The November general election will be held on November 3rd. The Elections Office needs to receive materials 88 days prior to the election or by August 7th. However, your final board meeting prior to August 7th is July 28th, as your board has scheduled a break during the weeks of August 3rd and August 10th. The items the Elections Office will need immediately after your board's July 28th meeting include ballot language, based on opinion polling, ordinance language pursuant to Government Code Section 53724. The ordinance would need to include the type of tax, the rate to be levied, the method of collection, the date upon which the election will be held, and in the case of a special tax, the purpose or service for which it is imposed, and this is considered a special tax, and would need a 2/3 majority vote from the public. This would also require a 2, a 4-fist vote from your board as well to place this ballot measure on, on the November ballot. And the last item that the Elections Office would need is a tax rate statement. They would need that by August 21st. So that concludes my update, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, one of the concerns I have, looking at the, just the bottom line part of the $156,000 that would take to do this polling, and as I mentioned at our last meeting, the, there's probably going to be a state ballot on resilience as well. I, I'm getting a little bit concerned about whether or not this is a wise move, specifically because of the, what we're dealing with right now, the coronavirus, and, and the impact that's going to have on, on our economy. So I just want to know if my colleagues have anything to say about that. Supervisor Bone?
I
Supervisor Bone, by the way, is on an ad hoc committee to, to address this.
I am, I am on the ad hoc, and, and I just, just got privy to some of the projects and, and some of the things we're talking about spending the money on, and I, I firmly believe in doing this resiliency, but I'm, I'm also a realist, and looked at all the tax bonds, this has a snowball's chance in hell of passing in Humboldt County, I feel. And that's, I'm just 20%, but I don't think it has an opportunity, because the way my phone's been ringing off the hook, and nobody's called me to say it's a great idea, you're more than welcome to, but I just, 66% are going to be asked to be, and, and with school bond taxes, one looking like it may happen. I mean, the fire tax in Arcata, McKinleyville, looks like it's going to go down to defeat. And we're talking about, we, we don't have a number, we don't have anything else, maybe $156,000 in the, in the scheme of things is a lot of money, but if we could get accurate information like we've got, I, I just really, I, I think it's a great idea, but I think before we go any farther, I've, I've been doing some stuff on some solar, some private solar, 200-acre solar farm, close to a, close to a junction to tie into PG&E. I, I guess that's a little more acceptable, but I, I noticed that some of the projects talked on, on, on land, wind. Some of it's offshore, spending quite a bit of money over there on the Redwood Dock to get the windmills out in the ocean. And I still stick by my story that that's 10 years down the line, I just, because the Central Valley just got an OK from the Navy, and I have a, I have a deep feeling that they're going to probably try to run that project through to see how it actually works and how it affects the fishermen. I, I like the idea, but, but I'm also a realist, and maybe I'm, I'm wrong, but I just don't see this passing, and the people that have been calling are going to put up a pretty good charge against it, and I don't know, are we putting money in there to promote it? Because there's also going to have to be funding to promote this measure, if, if, if to, because if we go into the, if we go into this ballot measure without any bullets in our gun, or arrows in our quiver, or whatever analogy one needs, we're going to lose. So, those are, those are just my thoughts, and I, anyway.
I'd like to invite Supervisor Wilson, who's also part of the ad hoc committee on this.
Thanks for, for having this discussion. I, I share some of the anxieties that have been expressed. I think that we are definitely in an uncertain time, but we are supposed to also be looking towards what is, what we'll be looking at for November, and hopefully, times will be a bit different. I do think that a lot of what people are looking for in the current context is some resilience and independence of all of our infrastructure systems in Humboldt County. I think this is a tool to move us in that right direction, if it's focused on those things that really give us that. I'm not sure about the guaranteed opposition in that we don't really have the proposal on the table yet, and so I think that's a bit premature. Resiliency can be in the form of supporting critical infrastructure, making a higher percentage of our homes and institutions and businesses independent from the grid, but also in support of the grid, and moving us in ways that also allow us to independently support our transportation infrastructure as well, and I mean by fueling and, you know, having people and businesses have transportation vehicles that are more independent of the existing system. I also want to mention that we have had offers to support us in the, the funding for doing polling, that we, I would never have the, the county doing it independently. I think unless we get at least half of that funding from other agencies I think unless we get at least half of that funding from other agencies or support, I would say that it would not be worth going forward. And I would offer that any funding that we may or generate from something like this, you know, be guaranteed to have, you know, at least a one, if not two or three, times max. So, I'm cautious. I think we should continue to move forward with no guarantee that we're actually going to do this at this time. We're not being asked, as far as I can tell, to approve a contract, just that we continue to move forward with trying to figure something out that works. And I would propose that we continue until we choose to do a different direction. That's what I have for now.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When you and Supervisor Wilson brought this, you know, I think it, there's a lot of, there is support for it in many quadrants, and there, it sounds like it has possibilities. I'm not privy to the projects that Supervisor Bone had mentioned that he'd seen, and so he's got a little different information. But I am concerned, mine is more the timeframe. We have staff that are already going to have work backing up so far, because right now we're kind of shutting things down for a couple of weeks. Who's to say it's not going to continue? And that only leaves four months to July 28th, right? April, May, June, July. And that's at a best-case scenario. So, I think my concern, one is for, you know, what are we really asking of staff? Even though I know it's not a, you know, Supervisor Wilson, I think, is just suggesting to continue considering it. My question would be, if not this November, what would be the next opportunity if we chose to do this? And I, through the chair, if I can ask our CAO.
We could either do, I mean, I'll let the CAO, but I think we could either do a special election, or we could do it in 2022.
Correct. Okay, so, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what is the next. I don't want to see us rush into something that, that, given what's going on right now. I mean, ask me a month ago, and I'd probably be saying a different answer right now with everything that's happening. I just think we could be stretching ourselves. Isn't it also possible that if we chose not to, there could be, community groups could bring it forward, though? A revenue bond, okay. Doesn't need a vote. Okay. Well, I'm just less excited to move it forward, you know, extremely quickly right now, because I feel there's just a lot of unknowns.
Well, and you mentioned that I was part of the team myself and Supervisor Wilson to bring it forward. I agreed to join with Supervisor Wilson, just to get the feeling for it. My intuition at the time was that it might not be very successful, especially given, again, we're not talking very much about it, but the state is going to float a bond. And I think that that will be addressing resilience and response to climate change, and there will be avenues for funding for certain, certain parts of that throughout the state. So, that's another concern for mine, and as I mentioned, just the fact that we are really taking a hit. I mean, the state, the nation, the world is taking a hit from what's been characterized by our president as an invisible enemy. And so, we have to think a little bit about whether or not we do want to invest in something that we don't have a very clear feeling about, you know? So, that's where I am at on that right now. Supervisor Madron, did you want to speak on this before I put it to the public?
Yes, thank you very much. Well, I certainly share the concerns that I've heard expressed by my fellow colleagues here around timing, and I absolutely would love to see Measure R get back on the ballot in November for the Fire District. I think that's huge, very critical in terms of safety of community and all those things. So, it puts us in a really difficult place, along with this current crisis. But I will say that I think that the goals of this particular bond measure are to try and plan effectively and timely to get out in front of what is a slow-moving tsunami in terms of sea level rise, climate change, and all the impacts in our community that that represents. So, I would hope that we don't wait till it becomes a crisis on the level of COVID-19 to where we finally act. So, we're in this difficult place, this balancing act of, we know we need to move forward with things. Hopefully, the state bond will help some. I think that having a local bond would be fantastic, to try and provide support to making a lot of the things, a lot of the changes we need to make sooner than later. But the timing is very, very difficult in terms of how this stuff would all come to the November ballot, and how many of them are going to pass in this economic climate that we're just beginning to see, you know, the ramifications of. So, I struggle with it as well. I support the concept. I think we need to do it. I think it would ultimately be money well-spent in, if we do it, you know, well. And like we know with Measure Z and other things, it takes an effort to really get over that hurdle now with Measure Z by putting in the language of, and other general fund uses. We were able to pull that off with 50% plus one, because the voters focus on all the language leading up to that last little statement. And because we have the Measure Z Committee, it created a tremendous amount of accountability, which is what the taxpayers wanted. So, I think we've learned a lot about how to craft things to get the support, but 66.7% is a very high bar, as we see with Measure R and many other things. So, I would be fine with continuing the discussion for another couple of weeks to think about this, to see where things are going, and to keep the discussion alive and bring it back for a little further discussion here at the board in several weeks. So, I guess that would be my preference, that we would extend the conversation. I'm not sure there's specific direction for the board at this time, unless the ad hoc would like to offer some. But I also was wondering about this list. I haven't seen any list of projects, and that, that's where the rubber hits the road. That's where people start getting anxious or excited, you know? Oh, wow, I absolutely support that, or, oh, my God, I don't want to see money spent on that. And that, so, you know, getting out in fear, in front of that fear factor is important as well. So, if there is a list circulating around, or something that is being generated around what we might consider using these funds to support, let's get that out there and talk about that at our next meeting a little bit more, because that's where we'll see, you know, is there increasing support for this or not? It's going to have a lot to do with what we intend to spend people's money on, I think. So, I'd like to get that information and then have the discussion again, say, on April So.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. I'm going to put it out to the public, sorry.
Can I, just a point of clarification. Your board appointed an ad hoc, and so that ad hoc group is vetting a list of projects right now, and they are prioritizing that list of projects, because then that list would be used in opinion polling. And so, all of that information will come to your board once the ad hoc, which is made up of Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Wilson, is prepared to do that.
Thank you, CAO Nielsen. Now, I'll invite public comment.
I support you tabling this like you've spoken. You do have two weeks' worth of leeway, if it comes down to deadlines, where you can change your schedule, which you do on an ongoing basis. If this is still ongoing, I'm guessing we probably will not be going to these functions or whatever you go to during that time period, if that is a CSAC thing or time period, and we'll see how that goes. I agree with Rex Bone on this matter. I agree with Rex quite frequently. A chance of a snowball in hell is a very good assessment of this particular measure. You're going to have, I believe, Trinidad's tax, Eureka's tax, a road tax from Eureka. I'm trying to work with Arcade Fire District to bring forward something that the voters will find acceptable for that district, because I concur, they need a fix, whether it be through Measure Z funding or some other source of funding. The Taxpayers League does not come out always against taxes. This particular one, I was speaking with a particular project, and I can't speak for the league, but I'm executive director, a particular project which we possibly could support. And if you have the Taxpayers League supporting a tax, I think your odds are great. I strongly caution you on other bond issues I've seen that are paid for by the property owners, that the property owners are the people who should be voting on this. Bring forward something that, otherwise, we feel like people who don't own property, and we will pass this on to our tenants. We will lobby this, it'll go to our tenants, there won't be any more freebies, as far as that goes out there from landlords, I can guarantee you that. During this time, I strongly support, you're going to need that. Maybe I misunderstood, I think it's $156,000 you were committing to at this time. Now, maybe Supervisor Wilson had a different idea, but that's what I saw happening. This decision was to go ahead and commit financially. The other thing, just so you know, you can go back to March 3rd, and those projects you were asking about were on your agenda, in your package, and if you read through on that topic, it's one of the last things on the agenda for March 3rd. It did list a lot of potential projects. I wasn't here that time, so I did go back and do my due diligence and research that. I found some of them to be objectionable. I found the main context in there, there was only one public comment letter, and that one was trying to get, basically get rid of something I strongly support, which is responsible fuels management in our woods and cogeneration plants. So, that's all I found when I did my research on this, as far as being the quote-unquote "six district supervisor," having not attended that particular meeting. But I do support what you're doing. There's no hurry here, and I don't think this would pass unless you can give us one specific project to use it, and let the landowners make the vote whether we support that particular project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
We have a meter measuring radiation. Adding a second subject to the title on a ballot isn't anything to pat yourself on the back about. And also, the people of Southern Humboldt were led to believe that safety in Humboldt have a 10% special tax requiring two-thirds vote to pass, applied only in the unincorporated parts of the county. A maxim of law, once a fraud, always a fraud. You can't join in the fraud without being a part of it. This includes the group of Measure Z do-gooders receiving annual payback applications from the seven incorporated cities whose city council members sold their communities down the river, refused to abide by the rules and unlawfully imposed tax of an unincorporated county on the people in their unincorporated cities. The county, after nine months, is incapable of producing last year's 2018, 2019 annual financial report, yet $500,000 has been designated out of the People's Public Treasury to an external attorney to come to the county's aid in the many litigations that have been filed recently. So, I don't see, there's no guarantee that you're going to follow your own rules. I haven't seen it. Thank you.
Got to lift it up here. Morning, Chair Fennel. Supervisors, staff. I'd like to start off with a couple of key points. The first key point is, you know, talking about disease, which is a big topic nowadays. Bringing up stress, as Supervisor Madron did earlier. Leading cause for disease is actually economic stress. I don't know if you know that, but read a lot of articles on that. Also, going back to a tax measure out to the voters, thought maybe I might bring up also Proposition 13, that was killed on March 3rd by California, had a lot of taxes buried in the bill. So, while local energy resilience is key, I'm concerned with what could be an appropriate economic burden on the county budget and county taxpayers. First is a matter of fair process. It's important to note that everyone has been told to avoid gatherings of 10 or more people, that individuals over 65 are encouraged to stay home. Another bond is a big deal. This decision should not be made when a substantial portion of the population is being told by the government to stay home. I would suggest you delay this until the community can provide appropriate input without a fear of pandemic. I would also like to bring up the point that many here in Humboldt that own businesses and people that depend on those businesses are either not working or at minimal work capacity at this time, due the very large hit the COVID virus is taking. Would encourage this board at this time to look more into measures that would increase the financial sustainability of our community, rather than placing another onerous tax burden on it. The fallout from the COVID pandemic is unknown at this point, and may take months, if not years, to recover financially from. You, this energy issue at a more appropriate time, and concentrate more on the preparation for our future local economic needs. This county also continues to grapple with crumbling infrastructure. Significant public health and safety challenges, and still trying to figure out cannabis permitting and zoning issues. County government and the taxpayers are working together through different measures to address these issues, but much work remains to be done. Our time and resources are better spent focused on these issues than trying to get more money, which no matter how you cut it, ends up being a tax burden on our community to fund as-yet-unknown projects. Thank you for considering these comments, and I encourage the board not to move forward with this measure. That would create an additional tax burden on our community. I would ask you to focus on other ways, such as private interests or grants, to attain local renewable energy projects at a more appropriate juncture. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
This is Mike. I want to...
Supervisor Wilson.
I hear all of these concerns, and I completely concur that they are reasonable, and the anxiety is reasonable. I also want to put out that what the last speaker mentioned is that there is some limited input from the public about this because of the current situation, and that would be in both directions, whether to move forward or not move forward with this. Again, it's not, we're not being asked to commit money at this moment, we're asking to commit some time. And I know that's also precious at this time. But we also, part of being leaders and being, having leadership is thinking past the current situation. And I think Supervisor Bone mentioned that several times, when we were talking about the, our current situation with the virus. And I think that having a few more meetings to discuss whether or not what this is and how it might move forward is prudent, considering the indecision we're talking about doing. I will say that a tax measure could be quite small relative to some others, considering the likelihood or the requirements of having multipliers, including state bonds. So, if the state is approving a bond, and if we have our own resources to put into the pool, our likelihood of receiving those monies increases dramatically. And so, I would just ask that we have one or two more meetings with the ad hoc committee, some discussion in the community, and bring it back at the next scheduled meeting to see if the conversation has changed.
Supervisor, thank you, Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Bone.
You know, I'm still thinking the time and effort that's going to, no much, and this is just my 20%, no matter how much time and effort we spend on this, the result's going to be the same. But I'm also looking at, we're almost taking the job of Redwood Coast Energy Authority away from them, since they've got their CCA, and they're building up a resource and revenue, and that their idea is clean energy, charging stations and everything else, and they actually have a staff of 30, 40, how many people do they have still? They've got a pretty good-sized staff, because I know they've had to move offices a couple of times to accommodate them. I'm almost thinking that maybe they should be the ones that have the experts on it and run with this, and we should probably not necessarily partner with them, just give it to them and see where they want to go with it, and do the polling to see, because it looks like most of the, a lot of the projects are all based on... transportation efficiency vehicles, charging stations, wind generation, power generation, everything that they are striving to do. Whereas we kind of helped with the setup that JPA so they could do with the municipalities. That way, everybody's involved. And I wish Matthew was here for this so I could, you know, before I throw this on their lap. But they have a lot of smart energy people that may know how to deliver this ball a lot better than we can. So I would love to, if we want to kick this down the road a little bit, I would like to see the experts on it. And the ones that are going to, the ones who are going to benefit are the, is the people of Humboldt. But the delivery should be done by the people that have taken over the job of charging for all the power and where they get it from. And this seems to be a good source for them. And as we do this, I mean, I don't know if anybody's looked at the revenue bond or looked at private payback. So we don't, the problem with this is it's a partial tax. Which means, and I look at John, he won't be able to give me the number, but I think like 40% of the people actually own property. And the others are renters and things. I think the number, and I don't know the exact number, but it looks like a lot of people are going to pay for a benefit. And it's an overall benefit, so I'm not downplaying that. But I think maybe we should look at more help. And I think that's who you're looking for is helping with this. But maybe SHOTS and the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, who are funded to do just power and these things, maybe take the lead on it rather than the county. And I don't know if that's possible. I'm just throwing it out there.
I think that's an interesting concept. It's something that I could bring forward to RCA at an upcoming meeting. What are your thoughts on that Supervisor Wilson?
I think, I agree with Supervisor Bone on the activity or- the level of engagement of RCA should be very high on this. I think that's completely reasonable. And I would ask that through the chair and her membership on RCA to really bring that back to that organization, which is Humboldt County Organization in essence, to bring their expertise and their resources to bear on this. I think that's a reasonable course of action.
So Supervisor Bone?
I'll make a motion that we assign Supervisor Fennel to work with Redwood Coast Energy Authority to see the level of acceptance for their, all their levels of municipalities in the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District to take on this project.
I would second that motion. But I would like to add that we continue to have our ad hoc committee to communicate directly with RCA. I think it's important that we have a place in that discussion.
I can add that to it. What's that?
Well, since it wasn't a suggestion to disband the committee, I suspect that works just fine as is.
Yeah. And I'm doing this just because I would like to have, we're talking about putting a bond measure out there and we have, you know, all the incorporated cities in Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District belong to the RCA. And I think these cities, much that was mentioned, Trinidad, Arcata, the people of McKinleyville are going to go, we're going to compete with your fire, we're going to compete with your road tax, we're going to compete with everything that you want. And I guarantee you, nobody's going to vote for all the taxes and there's going to be a sacrifice. And 66% is going to be a pretty steep hill. So I think we're going to find out. And this is a good way to let the incorporated cities that we also all represent have a say in this. Because I think that's one of the problems that Supervisor Bass brought earlier. We don't include the incorporated cities enough. And this is a way they have a bite at the apple and say, you know, that sounds really great, but why don't we look to see if we can get some funding from the state with the bond they're bringing, resiliency bond forward? And we will energize our cities. We will make sure we get more charging. We will make sure that Elon Musk gives us $10,000 off and zero interest on these electric cars because we keep talking about adding these charging stations and I can't afford one of those cars, so. And I don't know after we get through with, since we are looking at this shutting down for two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, I don't know who's going to be able to afford them. So I think this is probably the best way to have all the incorporated cities involved and the large water agency, because I think it's important. They have a word in this.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, we have a motion- Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, slow to respond.
That's fine Supervisor Madron.
You know, I really appreciate the discussion here. And I think what's important to realize is that we're not really sure how to proceed. So I like the direction that this motion has of you talking with RCA and the ad hoc talking more with all these special matter experts in this regard, be it the Water District, RCA, SHOTS, et cetera. And I think it'd be great to bring that back to the board in April or whenever is timely appropriate. Because I think we might all agree that there are things we need to do. Maybe we need to hone down that list of what's the most important, et cetera. But the real question is, how are we going to finance those things that we need to do? Is it going to come from state funding? Would that be assisted by having local funding? If it were local funding, who pays? Is it the landowners? Is it, you know, how do you do that? How do you create a fair and appropriate way to move forward? Because I do believe it would be good to incentivize this, but it might be as simple as that. Creating better incentives for those in the private sector that want to make investments into this to be able to get a good economic margin out of that, you know. So having the discussion back here at the board in several weeks to think about what are our needs and how is it best to get those needs met? So I think that would be great to have that discussion.
Yeah, I think that, you know, there's a couple of factors here. First of all is exactly the trepidation I had at the very beginning. This is sort of like a last minute thing in the first instance. It almost was too late without the whole instance of the coronavirus, et cetera. The added expenses that we're going to have as a county for sure with no guarantee that we won't be dipping into our contingencies to deal with them. So at this time, you know, allocating somewhere in the neighborhood of $156,000 to do a poll that many of us believe will tell us it's not good to move forward, also with a restricted timeline. I will bring all of those things to the attention of RCA, just see if there is any interest among the other members of the joint power authority in moving forward. But again, that would be really different than if we were to move forward as the county. So we'll see how that goes. We have a motion in a second.
I have a question. Can I get a clarification on the motion?
Yes Supervisor Wilson.
My motion is to have Supervisor Fennel use her position on the Board of the RCA to take this proposal for them to take this and run with it rather than the county because they have the expertise. They've actually given us, the ad hoc committee, the list of projects that they had in mind, even though, you know, albeit that was, you know, very quickly done. But they can also, and if they want, they can work with, they have a great working with the shots. I'm just saying Supervisor Fennel, take this project forward and give it to Redwood Coast Energy Authority because they will be the beneficiary and the actuary and they're the ones who are going to implement it, so.
I have a question then.
With the ad hoc committee still having in-
Saying to disband the current ad hoc committee?
With the ad hoc committee having, still being in place with the discussions.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson.
And I do need a clarification on that. We will have to be very careful with our talks with the board because we won't be able to talk, if we have an ad hoc, we won't be able to talk to Supervisor Fennel about what she needs to say and things like that without a Brown Act violation, even though those have been reacted, been changed. I don't think that part of it has been changed. And I see the CAO cringing at me, so.
May I ask, so one of the things that we need to do is get that project list. Because when you're doing a bond measure, it's project specific. And so if you're asking RCA to take this on, when is that next meeting? When is that going to happen? Because we're up against a timeframe here. At the same time, we now have, I do need to add that staff now have additional responsibilities happening. The county administrative office has an obligation to provide services to the Joint Information Center. So that takes priority. I do need to make your board aware of that.
I'm, how do you want me to clarify the motion that we basically just give this to RCA to run with?
That's your board's decision. I'm not, that's a policy decision that your board makes.
I think my motion, does my motion say that?
My understanding is it is to have Supervisor Fennel bring this to RCA as the chair and have RCA take on this project. But allowing the ad hoc to continue the communication directly with RCA as well.
And if I can change that, maybe, and now I'm looking at RCA or basically maybe looking at our county council. Can I drop off, can I resign from the ad hoc committee, which will put the RCA member Estelle Fennel in constant contact with Supervisor Wilson without the, having to worry about the conclusion of a Brown Act violation?
So are you asking to basically take yourself off of the ad hoc committee and then replace yourself with Supervisor Fennel?
Yep.
I don't see any legal issues with doing that.
Are you okay?
This is Mike here. I want to say that's a pretty strategic suggestion on the part of Supervisor Bone. As Supervisor Fennel and myself, I'm the alternate for RCA and we can have those discussions directly as a team.
I'm fully aware of that. That's why I, every once in a while, I can pull a nugget out.
Now, I think that that's, that would be helpful. And I have already memorialized my understanding of the discussion here and will bring that forward for the information of CAO. The next RCA scheduled meeting is March 26th. I don't know if that's going to move forward or not, given the current situation we are all in. So, but that is the next scheduled meeting. All right.
The motion would need to be amended.
This is Mike. I say we try to move forward as best we can in these trying times and be mindful of being flexible and keep our expectations in check.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
I think-
Oh, sorry.
The motion will need to be amended to reflect.
So my understanding now, the motion would be for Supervisor Fennel to bring this to RCA to have RCA take over this project, but continuing with the ad hoc to communicate directly with RCA and removing Supervisor Bone off of the ad hoc committee, but appointing Supervisor Fennel to that position on the ad hoc, is my understanding.
Sounds good. Okay. With that, we do have a motion and a second, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, so roll call vote Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Five oh.
Thank you. That's a unanimous vote. And that is almost all of our meeting. We will now be going into closed session. And I'll ask county council to give us the list of what we'll be dealing with there.
It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, in order to confer with legal counsel regarding existing litigation in the matter of Jason Daniels versus Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, case number ARB-13-0472. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee performance evaluation for the position of county council.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item?
Kent Swatzky, in the matter of reviewing the performance of county council, as I've said before, his job now is to sit at home and cash a paycheck. Right now, you need all your sharpest tools in your tool belt. My understanding is when you review him, you go back to your views of him prior to what happened here, which I refer to as Amy Gate, we'll continue to, and that you reinstate this individual, that you settle with him to compensate him for his time or his legal costs or whatever he feels appropriate. Because my opinion is he's going to win that in court. We need him back here. We need all of our people back here. We need to let go of some of these things. I'm not aware of any of you having any angst that I heard about regarding that until he became a whistleblower out of necessity with the county. It's just one of those things that befuddles me, why we can go on and on and on with this. The end result, again, that autistic savant, whatever you want to call me there baloney, is, and I get this all from talking to people in the profession, legal people, getting as much information as I can. When you consider his performance, consider the fact that I go around and I in the past and have done risk analysis on a person like that coming back. And risk analysis enables me to lend money to attorneys if necessary to do right and fair in the public forum. I don't recall having lost any more than, less than $10,000 all my years of doing this. So I'm very good at my risk assessment. You should be very good at assessing his value, evaluating him as a prior employee to this situation. I strongly recommend you get past this, evaluate him as being competent, bring him back into this position. And maybe everybody can set aside whatever angst or animosity is involved with the whistleblower position that's got him here. Maybe not. I think he's a good enough man and a good enough individual that if he's taken care of, he may consider that. I can't speak for the man. Please look toward it in that direction. We need all the sharpest tools in our tool belt we've got. Thank you. And you're missing one at this time, obviously.
Thank you. Any further comment on this item? Seeing none, we will go into closed session for the help with Humboldt access. Any idea how long this might take us?
30 minutes.
30 minutes, okay. So we'll be back here at 11:45.
It's kind of blushing over here.
All your mics will be on, because I just turned the PDA system on.
Okay. Okay, we're back out of closed session. Okay, we're back out of closed session. Council, Miles, do we have anything to report out?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Board of Supervisors has unanimously approved the appointment of Jefferson Billingsley as the interim county council effective March 30th, 2020. There were no other reportable actions at today's closed session.
Thank you. We are adjourned.